Good afternoon and welcome to the Virtual Board of Education Legislative Meeting of Monday, September 12th, 2022. The public has been invited to attend board meetings in person and to access the virtual board meeting through several telecommunication platforms. Those are Verizon 42, Comcast 95, and via livestream online. The board will have a hard stop at 5:30 PM. Ms. Harrison, please do the roll call for the board.
Ms. Domon Small?
Present.
Dr. Wu?
Present.
Ms. Mallow?
Present.
Ms. Agula?
She's here.
Ms. Mosley?
Present.
Ms. Watts?
Present.
Dr. Wu?
Present.
Ms. Catronio?
Present.
I'm confirming a quorum.
Thank you. Delegate Watson, please do the roll call for the delegation. Is Delegate Watson on? I didn't even...
I do not see her name.
Given that it's not our meeting, do you really need a roll call for something?
No, we're not taking a, um, a vote on anything, so it doesn't, we don't need to establish quorum, so we can just proceed.
I think Clarence Lamb, Senator Lamb, raised her, raised his hand.
And Eric Ebersol is also in the attendees.
Okay. Senator Lam, um, Lamb?
Can somebody promote?
Okay. Um, and I know we have members of the county council here too also. Um, so I'm just gonna go ahead and just get started. Um, welcome, um, to our delegation and to members of county council and all other members of the community that are watching. Um, we, we, this is our yearly, um, pre-legislative session, um, uh, meeting with the delegations that we can share our priorities and, um, have a little bit of collaboration prior before they leave, um, for Annapolis. And we appreciate the collaboration and the advocacy of our delegation. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Margarano.
Thank you, Ms. Catronio, and board members, and to members of our delegation and elected officials. Uh, thank you very much for your time this evening. Um, I'm gonna be brief in terms of my comments and just thank you for your ongoing collaboration. I know it's early in the process and I'm looking forward to a robust conversation on these topics. And I have several staff members here who can ask, answer specific questions as well. Thank you very much, Ms. Catronio.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to, um, the Chair of our Legislative Committee, um, Vice Chair, Antonia Watts.
Um, good afternoon, everyone. I, um, along with the Legislative Committee and the board, would like to present the legislative platform. We're just going to touch upon a few, um, changes. Each board member has selected a topic. Um, they will be, give you about a two to three-minute spiel um, on that topic, and we will try to reserve questions until the very end, um, as some board members may touch upon, um, some overlapping priorities and, um, may answer your question through that. Um, I know we do have a hard stop at 5:30, so we will try to be brief. Uh, and first, we will start off with, uh, Ms. Mallow.
I will be tackling the blueprint, uh, funding issues. So while the blueprint legislation made significant changes in per pupil funding, uh, we find that in Howard County, because the baseline for which we spend was already above that of what is dictated by the blueprint, that, uh, absent additional change to the legislation, there is no impetus for funding above our existing MOE. And, um, it doesn't mandate increases in MOE per pupil funding that support the costs associated with implementation. So for all of the requirements of the blueprint, uh, there isn't a necessary, uh, corresponding increase in our MOE because we are, our starting point was so high above the, uh, legislated amount. And as well, there are additional funding issues with regards to pre-K, in particular to capital, but I know that we are addressing capital later, so I will hold that portion for any particular, uh, later point and can speak to any questions you have. And with that, I will go on to the next person.
Um, really quickly, if we can let everybody that's in the attendees into the meeting, um, that's, that'd be great because we have, um, some delegates and staff members in the attendees. Um, and also I want to really quick take this opportunity to thank, um, Danielle Lu King. Um, she also, um, provided you with a two-pager that is a great summary of our school system and our priorities and as well as the, um, kind of that's the seven-page document that we're going through for, uh, the legislative priority. So she really did boil it down very well, um, into a, a nice tangible document. So, um, the next person we have is, um, Dr. Yu Lu, Yun, Dr. Yun Lu. There we go.
Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. Uh, I'm going to talk about teacher recruitment and retention. This topic is not unique to Howard County. Across Maryland and the nation, last year, all the school systems scrambled to recruit teachers. And we know that attracting and retaining excellent educators is so essential for well-functioning education system. Uh, at the same time, we also need to promote inclusion and reflect the culture difference of our student body. So workforce diversity is also important. So the need to increase the supply of available teachers over the next several years will be crucial to maintain the level of service expected by our community and essential for our young learners. So the board has decided include the topic of teacher retention and recruitment as a priority for the 2023 session because school systems need all available tools to attract high-quality individuals into the profession, have a pipeline of diversified teachers ready to fill the expanded workforce needed to meet the goal of the blueprint for Maryland's future, and ultimately retain these individuals in the long run. As you'll find in our priority write-up in your document for this section, there are many avenues being considered by the state and other examples from across the country for alternative to teacher certification that allows for flexibility in demonstrating mastery of teaching while maintaining high standards, interstate teaching complex, grow your own initiatives, scholarships, and loan forgiveness, and similar matters that incentivize teachers to work locally. One state scholarship in particular, the Teaching Fellows for Maryland, is worth for the exploration to capitalize on its ability to attract teachers. So we appreciate effort of General Assembly to address the needs for high-class teachers and leaders with the passage of the blueprint, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you. And, um, I think the staff will be able to answer questions and I will save, um, the time for, uh, the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Ms. Domon Small for capital funding.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I'm gonna deal with capital funding and the challenge of the local match. As you know, the school system receives capital funding for projects from both state and county funding. And, um, there are two, two I'm gonna talk about tonight. First is the, um, Public School Construction Program. And under this particular program, the amount of state funding we receive for a construction project is based on specific factors such as a local we- taxable wealth, and it's currently 56%. So the remaining 44% has to be the local match. And the challenge that we have is that if there isn't the local funding, it's very difficult for us to go after the state dollars because we need the local dollars in order to get the state dollars. There's also another fund, which is the Healthy Schools Facilities Fund. It is also subject to this local match requirement. This is an award. This, um, is a granting program where we will receive funds for capital projects to improve the health of school facilities with priority for projects that correct issues that are posing immediate life, safety, or health threats. Because this also has this local match, if we were able to successfully advocate for the elimination of this local match requirement, it would enable us to redirect very, very scarce county dollars to other projects. Because the challenge that we have is that when we talk about the, um, that local match is that the 56% that we get from the state has to be for eligible portions of eligible projects. So it's not a very clean 44, 56. And to give you an idea of what that looks like in dollars is for FY24, we are requesting $76.3 million for our capital funds. The state portion of that is only 21.8 million with 54.5 million having to come from the locals. So as you can see, the more we can do to free up on the local side will allow us to put money where we need, especially for deferred maintenance components. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next up is Dr. Wu, and he's going to tackle long-term facilities maintenance and also mitigating development impact.
Thank you, Ms. Watts. For the long-term facility maintenance, I would say that's something we have been talking about for a long time. Aging infrastructure really creates significant demand for facility maintenance funding, with the current deferred maintenance project totally nearly half a billion dollars for Howard County Public Schools system. So we, the board, really encourage our delegation, along with the local elected officials, to explore financial options dedicated to purpose funding for long-term facility maintenance for several years. The board continues to advocate for introduction of a local bill as well as statewide legislation brought forward by delegation member under HB 006A, SB 0040, Interagency Commission on School Construction, Systematic Renovation Project eligibility, which the board supported in 2022, to clarify that the Interagency Commission on School Construction shall consider systematic renovation project eligible for supplement public school construction finance and facilities fund under the Bill to Learn Act regardless of the cost. The second part is about mitigating development impact. I think in order to highlight how quick, how fast our school system is growing, in 2019, Howard County actually had more new students than Montgomery County. Even their citizen population is three times of student population of Howard County. So the APFO is intended to allow public facility sufficient time and financing to have commensurate capital infrastructure growth to meet population needs. Legislation seeking to extend current wait time for development facility failing school tests under APFO had repeatedly failed at the county level. While additional wait time gives the breadth of incoming development, they eventually move forward, leaving the need to fund additional capacity continuously year after year. The board is seeking Howard County delegation authorization if needed, and Howard County Council's support for financing option dedicated to purpose of mitigating development impact on school system capacity. This could include further study of the use of required fee or fee new option to produce supplemental capital funding for expected capacity increase. In cases where capacity is beyond the predetermined threshold, that will require new construction. A requirement for land acquisition may also be warranted. We need to hold local community accountable on the development side and provide sufficient support for our public school system. Thank you.
And I, um, next up, I wanted to talk about the, um, digital learning flexibility. So, um, as a reminder, not all things that came out of COVID were, were bad. We actually learned a great deal from this, about the school system and how our students prefer to receive their information. Um, and while virtual is not the preferred option for, for the majority of students, there were still a good number of students that really enjoy virtual learning, and they found that that was their, the way that they thrived. Um, and so one of the things we'd like to do is protect the option for students who find themselves, um, succeeding in virtual learning and for families that wanted that choice for their child to really hold that virtual option in place. Um, we wanted to move away from kind of this one-size-fits-all model and allow our students to really pick what works for them. It would also allow us, our teachers, while they do a fantastic job with differentiated learning, to, uh, to allow students to learn in a different way. Um, it also gives us a nibble response to any kind of emergency situations, and it allows us to expand offering, offerings in our high schools. So, uh, so we can kind of create a fair and even playing field for all of our students to access the course content that they need for, for success. Um, and this is just really in the spirit of local control, so we just asked the delegation that there not be any bills or restrictions placed on virtual learning so that we can, um, bring back the DEC, the Digital, Digital, um, Education Center, that we can offer our students the ability to, um, access information in the way that they, that best suits them. And now, um, um, Ms. Catronio is going to do, um, special education burden of proof.
As I say, um, from, from last year, we had, um, the, a burden of proof legislation that was, um, sponsored by Senator Hester, so thank you, and supported by the entire delegation, um, to shift the burden of proof, um, from families, um, to the school system in due process cases. So I'm just gonna be very brief because we, you, you all know about this because this is a repeat. Um, we are going, we've already met with Senator Hester, um, to plan for filing this again. It was, um, unanimously supported, and the general was in the House of Delegates. It faced a roadblock in the Senate and committee. Um, and so this year, we're going to try and get it, um, passed that. Um, Senator Hester, I guess we can wait to the end, um, if she wanted to provide any feedback, but that's basically just a burden of proof, so we will be doing it again. And once again, thank you all for your, um, your support of it last year.
Okay, thank you. Um, and Ms. Lu King is going to wear, uh, another hat today, and she's going to take on, um, access to home and hospital.
Uh, good afternoon. Again, I'm Danielle Lu King, the Legislative and Legal Affairs Officer. Um, this particular topic, access, access to home and hospital, is something that our staff brought to me after last session. Um, there was a bill that passed HB 1327, which, um, requires the MSD to bring you a report, uh, this December regarding home and hospital, a couple key points, and then also overall changes needed in statute or regulation. And one of the things that our staff noted is there is a particular COMAR regulation that currently prevents certified nurse practitioners from authorizing the use of home and hospital. There has to be a authorization from a physician. And the way that that is written, it is currently keeping our certified nurse practitioners, which we understand from some of the families, that they are the ones treating the students, but they aren't the ones able to sign off on home and hospital. Um, and I have reached out directly to MSD to talk about this, that there's ways we can do it internally, but it has been something they've brought up a couple years in a row, along with some other systems. And so if that report coming out in December has some things that you're looking to change with the home and hospital program, that might be a issue that you might want to add there as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lu King. And then, um, the last topic for today is menstrual hygiene product funding. Uh, Ms. Mosley.
Um, this ask is the board is seeking Howard County delegation to support for a bill requiring the annual appropriation from state and or local funding authorities to cover these additional costs. In, uh, 2021, a bill was passed requiring the provision of menstrual hygiene products in, um, middle schools and high schools and in elementary school. There was funding, one-time funding provided in FY 2023 to put the dispensers in. And, um, but this, um, legislation, uh, lacked, um, an, uh, annual funding for the actual supplies. Um, in the first, in October 22, um, they, uh, estimated yearly supplies for the dispensers that were installed to be $24,000. And as the, um, as the legislation says, it's expanding to be required in middle school and high school restrooms and, uh, would be around $65,000, a little more than $65,000 for Howard County to maintain the products to fill those dispensers. Um, this is an important aspect for, um, youth hygiene needs, and, um, we would like you to support, um, this need.
Thank you, um, uh, board members and, and Ms. Lu King. Um, so that, that concludes kind of our presentation of the topics that we had on hand. Um, and next up is the state budget and legislation out, outlook.
And that is, uh, gonna be presented by, uh, Senator Gagazoni.
I actually thought he felt he dropped off, um, so I don't see him on here anymore. Um, I'm not sure if somebody else wanted to present that.
Is anyone else prepared to address the budget, or should we just wait a minute so Guy gets back on and handle questions?
Could I suggest you move on to whatever is next? Because I think Delegate Gazzoni might be the only person unless maybe Delegate Adaberry knows something.
We could do questions until, um, Senator Gazzoni comes back. Right. The next item on the agenda is ques- art, I'm sorry, are questions. Let's move to that, and, um, I will try to contact Senator Gazzoni.
And for questions, can we, um, just try to use the hand raise feature so I can make sure that I, um, oh, look at this, that I make sure I get to everybody, um, pretty quickly. And, um, because we, we, we do have a good amount of time, but I don't know how long Guy, um, Senator Gazzoni's presentation will be. I'd like to leave maybe, um, 20 minutes, 15 minutes for that at the end. Um, so we'll start here. Okay. Um, Delegate Navatney.
Yeah, thank you so much. So one of the quotes in the information that you sent everyone was about the blueprint and the maintenance of effort. Uh, and it said, despite the goals of the blueprint, HCPSS will be forced to reduce existing services. Can anyone speak to the services and what kind of reductions will happen based on the blueprint passing? Thank you.
Let me, uh, take the first bite of the apple, if I may. Thank you once again, uh, for being with us this evening. Uh, I want the delegation, as well as our council members, as well as our Board of Education members, to understand that there is a, a lot of conversation amongst the 24 local superintendents. Uh, tomorrow I meet, uh, I've been pulled into a meeting with the state board to provide additional feedback on the implementation of, of the blueprint as it intersects with the AIB. One of the concerns, uh, that we have, Delegate Navatney, is the timeline associated with the implementation. And we have been giving that feedback consistently as it interplays, uh, with the amount of money expected to meet those various milestones. Uh, and so legislatively, this is the first time I think many of us have experienced some of these things where by FY27, for example, the expectation is that all starting teacher salaries are $60,000 across the state. Well, if there's not the extension, either the timeline or the infusion of more dollars at the very basic level, uh, that will require us, uh, to consider the examination of services that we have been coming to dependent upon that may have to be either pulled back or eliminated. Uh, I'm not necessarily prepared to say any of that publicly because we haven't gone through that analysis, but the bottom line is that the, the incredible expectation of a robust timeline and the expectation of dollars has created, uh, additional challenges on local dollars to make these things happen. Uh, to give you an example, uh, last year, we had a very, very dynamic and robust discussions at the local level. Uh, we have been able to make great strides in what we believe to be true as far as meeting the expectations of the blueprint. But again, uh, as our board members will probably give you a visual with their face reaction when I bring this up, we've also had to rely on fund balance, uh, to allow us to, to, to do some of that. So there's a lot of conversation around this, and there are great concerns that if we implement fidelity, that we may have to cut back on services provided at the local level, and that will continue through the discussions in the budget.
Uh, Ms. Watts?
Thank you. Senator Gazzoni?
Gazzoni's on the line, but I'm not sure he heard the question that was being raised. Um, do you just want to go ahead with your presentation, or do you want the question repeated? Senator Gazzoni?
I, well, I'm sorry. I, I lost connection. Apologize. Um, I don't know if I need to cut, was I supposed to give some presentation on the budget? That somebody said, I got a text about that. Is that accurate or what?
What is the state budget outlook? That's all.
Oh, that's it? Oh, okay. Easy enough. Um, we'll know more, uh, at the end of the month when we get the first revenue estimates in, uh, I believe on September 29th. We'll know even more in December. Um, I am anticipating, um, uh, at least flat. Um, uh, I don't think we really have any, um, clear picture at this point. Um, I'm not, um, but certainly not a, a, a time of, uh, particular concern at the moment, uh, about dramatic changes or, or declines. Uh, but I'm not anticipating the great increases that we've experienced, uh, over the last couple of years. Uh, the one twist to everything that I know everybody is interested in is this question one and the implementation of that, which of course really only gives us authority to, uh, make changes to the current year budget, which we have not had in the past. We will now have that authority. Um, and we're working on ways to, uh, implement that and how that will be implemented across both bodies.
Could you just elaborate on that, Senator Gazzoni, about how that actually works? I know that not everything is ironed out, but I don't think everyone has an understanding of what that means and how it's different.
Yeah. So, uh, for, uh, well over a hundred years, because of the, uh, terrible mistakes that were made, um, by our very, very in the history predecessors, uh, back in history predecessors, um, uh, unlike every other state in the nation, uh, Maryland did not have the authority to move money around in the current year budget. So we've always had the authority to create mandates, which of course the, the blueprint is, a mandate on the state, uh, budget, um, to, uh, do certain things. And we do it over the course of time. Sometimes we attach it to inflation. Sometimes we come up with actual numbers that says it has to be increased by certain amount every year. So, um, we've had the authority to do that, but we, what we haven't had to do, and it had the authority, is to make a change in the current year budget. So if there is something that we would like, a programmatic change that we would like to begin in a certain year, uh, we can do that now. Of course, just like a mandate, if, uh, the governor doesn't feel that, uh, that, uh, that particular thing can be done, uh, the, the, uh, uh, the legislature now will have to figure out a way to pay for it. Um, we've paid for it through mandates over the course of time, which we've done, and we are, uh, vigilantly doing, just like we did with, uh, we are doing with the, uh, the blueprint and our, well, our, on our way to, uh, being multiple years ahead of schedule. Um, and we're able to do even more so last year by putting additional $800 million in the blueprint. Um, but now we'll also be able to do that in a current year, should the need be necessary.
Um, board members, do you have any questions about this topic before we kind of move on to the Q and A for the remainder? Um, Ms. Domon Small?
Hi, yes, thank you for that, um, Senator. So the question is, as far as putting more funding in for the blueprint, is any of that on the capital side, or is that just all on the operating side?
Uh, well, it's, it's all, what do you mean? Could we put more money in on both capital and operating? Certainly. As it relates specifically to the blueprint, it's largely, uh, about the operating budget.
Right. The reason I ask that is that, as you well know, here in Howard County, we have a lack of capacity for our current students and the students coming in. We're gonna have the challenge of having to create capacity for pre-K students, additional pre-K students beyond those who are in, um, current rec programs and the programs now. So we are facing, the board is going to be facing very difficult decisions as far as what projects we move forward on the capital side, um, as to whether or not we do it for which student group right now. And that's the problem is because we don't have the capacity now for the students. How are we, where are we gonna put the pre-K students when they come?
Sure. So, um, the only answer that I can really give you is, is one of, uh, uh, recent history. Uh, I sat in one of your, one of these meetings several years ago, and, and the same concerns were raised about, uh, having high school about, um, uh, my goodness, Everyn, uh, Oakham Mills, um, Talbot Springs, Talbot Springs, uh, 13th High School. And what I said back then was, we'll figure it out. And we figured it out. And I think when we work together, we can do that. Um, when we, uh, realize that as a team, both the school board, the county superintendent and, and the state legislature, we can figure out ways to make this happen. We've done it before. We'll do it again. Now, look, when we look around the state, uh, I am sure you all recognize that as our capital projects are being judged by, uh, the IAC, uh, we are, uh, by far in better shape, uh, than the bulk of the state. And so in that context, um, and knowing that we will only get certain dollars, uh, formula, from the formula, we, um, we need to be thoughtful about how we do things and the timing in which we move things along. Um, we, of course, in Howard County have always demanded the best, and we still should, and we still should work towards that. And I think we can, we will, uh, as long as we work together.
No, I appreciate that, especially.
No, I appreciate that, especially the working together. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some, two more board members and then we'll shift back over to the Q and A. I don't want us to get too bogged down in Senator Ghazani, as he was not even thinking he's going to give this presentation. So Dr. Wu, please be brief. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ghazani. So my question about the adjustment of the limitation of blueprint, how do you envision that change in your account? Do you want to further expand it over more years?
Yeah, it's hard to know. Look, it's another thing where we set a very high bar. Remember too, and the adjustments that you're referring to and are in need of are largely because of the great, the great commitment that this board and previous boards and superintendents have made to the system. It literally is the fact that we are above and beyond that in a sense makes the situation what it is. So the question that we'll have to deal with, the board will have to deal with in a very difficult times at times, is at any given point, are we doing everything that we can for the blueprint as well as maintaining a whole host of things that were not required? But we thought were good things. And that does, then that means in my mind, that again, it's going to cause, take thoughtful working together. Now, this is a broader issue across the state, as you, I think, are well aware. And so we're going to be working with jurisdictions all across the state to try to figure out the best way to accommodate the needs, hopefully to a certain degree, to a certain degree jurisdiction by jurisdiction, but also by maintaining all the basics of what we want, we have wanted to accomplish through the blueprint.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mallow.
Thank you for all of that, Senator Ghazani. I wanted to, on behalf of the board, say thank you for SB two ninety-one and the funding, the thirty-five million in funding for capital. So when we talk about the budget outlook and capital and knowing some of that was earmarked for Howard County, what can, as we're trying to go into our capital budget and plan our CIP, is there anything that you want us to know about those funds? And how the delegation saw fit to approve them? And where they really wanted those funds to go and to be emphasized? If you have anything concise.
So that thirty-five million is actually another good example of, of hearing this concern about having match requirements. And so that's why we came up with it, and that's why we did it. And it is my belief, based on several conversations, we've met with superintendent, county executive, have numerous conversations, that there are certain ways in which the money can be used at a higher productivity level from a functional standpoint by law. And some of those areas include new projects like, or fixing the project like at Faulkner Ridge. Another example in my mind where it has higher utility is in systemic renovations. So, you know, happy to sit down and talk more about that. I know the county executive has some thoughts about that, and the superintendent does, and happy to walk through that.
Thank you so much for that. Yeah, we'll put you off the hot seat for now. And Delegate Kittelman, thank you for being so patient. Go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you very much. I read through the, not all of the materials, but the legislative platform that really goes into detail about the school system and what your goals and ideas and what you support and don't support. And it was very, very interesting. A lot of what you had to say was that the school board needs to have local control and request that the state pretty much stop giving mandates and other things like that. And I think that there's a very valid point there. The reason I think that the state, that our delegation gets involved, there are two reasons that will cause us to do so. One is the fact that unfortunately, when we set up all of the elected school boards, we did not give them the power to levy taxes so that they could raise their own funds. That makes a big difference. We and the state control most of the funds that go to, at least half the funds that go to the schools. So there is a responsibility there. And I think that that becomes more relevant to us when we hear from our constituents that they are not happy. And this goes to the philosoph, I have two questions. The first one's a little bit philosophical. But I think that the pandemic really raised a lot of issues with parents and students. And I think the fact that parents had so little ability to affect what was happening with their kids, that they had to romance, that they didn't go back to school at the same time. And the thing that I wanted to ask about is in this entire lengthy paper that you put together with all the, you know, the goals and the, I didn't see parents mentioned at all. And my, my thinking, and I think that parents by and large have a greater role in their children's education than perhaps is recognized. That there is expertise in the education system. But there is a clear role and a fairly substantial one for parents. And I just wondered if you could direct some thought to why that wasn't addressed? And how parents can feel that they will be involved in what, in the decisions of their children's education?
I can speak to that just a little bit because I did touch upon that in digital education. Because we did realize that, that parents saw some value in being able to choose a the virtual option for their child, right? I think one of the things that we, the legislative priorities repeatedly mentions though, is that we would like to not have unfunded mandates. Not that we don't necessarily understand the need to have mandates, but we would just want to make sure that there is sufficient funding that comes with some of the direction. And this mostly actually has a great, mentioned a great example, which was the measured products. We're all, we're definitely in support of that. But we want to make sure that the funding is there so that we can sustain some of the things that the state is requesting. And I don't know if Dr. Materano or his staff wants to also answer, or if any board member wants to follow up.
Continue, board members.
Okay. Actually, Ms. Watts, I was, I was thrilled with the comments that you made about that. Because it's what you said about parents and the different ways children learn, something that we have been saying for quite a, quite a while. And that goes to my second question. And it has, for me, it has to do with equity. Equity seems to be one of the things that we focus on very, very heavily and do so much to try and allow kids, regardless of their circumstances and situation, to have, to get the same good educational experience. During the pandemic, we, a lot of Howard County parents who had higher incomes had the opportunity to take their children out of the virtual learning situation, to put them into schools, to create other ways to, to get them educated because they had the funds to do it. The people with low incomes did not have that opportunity. And that goes directly to my support of school choice. It's not just virtual education. I think that was an excellent example of the fact that kids do learn differently. And I like the fact you said you wanted to get away from the one size fits all. And just the opportunity for kids to find, for the parents to find the type of education in which their children learn the best is something that I, I really think we need to look at, not only because it's good for the kids, but because it is just completely unfair for parents and families that don't have the income and whose children are in failing schools, not to have any way to get them out of those schools, whereas people who have the income to do so can undo.
Thank you so much. And this is where we really hope that our school system will continue to be funded at the high level in which it has been in the past and increasingly so. Delegate Hill.
Thank you. And first of all, let me just thank all of you for your hard work, particularly during the last two years and how well you've brought the county and our students through the pandemic and transitioning into this year's school year. So I want to thank you for that. And with all the changes that we're going through with implementation of the blueprint, I know that's challenging. I wanted to get back to, I guess, a separate issue. You were talking about recruitment and retention. And I know that the blueprint had an emphasis on that and put a significant amount of funding into that and in giving, you know, training support to teachers, et cetera. I, couple, couple of questions for you. I need to, I would like to know where, where exactly does the Bright Minds Foundation in Howard County, how is that working as a recruitment tool? Maybe my understanding is wrong, but I felt the foundation was a critical part of the recruitment of educators to our school system. So I'd kind of like to be clear on that. And then I'd also like to know, other than financial supports, how else we're looking at increasing retention of our teachers? For instance, over the years, I've heard from applicants in Howard County who grew up in Howard County, were graduates of the high school system and felt like they couldn't get a foot in the door here in Howard County, and they really wanted to come. They were hired in other school systems, and maybe they just weren't up to our standards. I also have heard, actually only a month and a half ago, from a couple of educators who said that the money is fine and that's a great incentive, but what's really in their experience causing burnout within the first five years is teachers aren't getting the other kinds of support they need. The example she gave was her school having a lockdown and the students being provided behavioral health supports and the teachers being told, if you need to talk to someone, you know, you can, you can work through your insurance company and find a counselor, but make sure you get something. And they, she just felt like there's so much stress, particularly going through the pandemic and all the other things that the nation's going through, that the teachers weren't getting sort of real wraparound services for themselves. So I'd just like to hear you all's thoughts about that and answers.
Dr. Materano is a huge advocate of the Wellness Wednesdays. I know he's going to say that. So go ahead, Dr. Materano.
Well, Dr. Hill, Delegate Hill, great to see you. First of all, you're a tremendous supporter of our school system and we appreciate it daily. You've, you've asked a lot of questions there and wellness is one of those particular items for our teachers. Let me just start honing in on that particular question. Specifically, what I'd like to say there is that the wellness and the wellbeing of our teachers is first and foremost that they can take care of our children. We have taken great advantage of our relationships with our unions to ensure that we have contracts that are very friendly to our teachers. That does start with our salaries and ensuring that there's planning time and that there is time to support the efforts that are needed for our children. Additionally, with the support of our Board of Education, we have added days into our calendar that are defined as wellness days, half-days where we acknowledge that our teachers need the support and we close down our school system. And we don't put any restrictions on those days for our teachers. They can do whatever they choose. If they want to stay in the classroom and work on their grading, they can do so. If they want to take time off to be with their family, they can do that as well. We believe in that well-rounded nature of them taking care of themselves. But we also know that the pandemic has really, really illuminated the fact that the challenges of the teaching profession are greater now than ever and that we need to continue to work at it. So it's more than just salaries. It's professional development, ensuring that there's days there to provide supports for them as well. And the ongoing dialogue that needs to occur with our teachers, you know, in that sense. And I'm very proud that those relationships are very collaborative. I could go into more detail, but I recognize our time is limited regarding that.
Chair Watson, did you have something that you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Thank you for calling on me. Number one, I wanted to compliment the board and the staff for this really comprehensive document that you've put forward with the things that matter to the Board of Education and the things you'd like to see, your positions on, things you'd like to see us do. And just want to say that we did get this late Friday, but we need time to digest it. And sort of those of us that are on different committees and have different areas of expertise, we need to talk to each other. And, and, you know, we're not really prepared to respond to it specifically today. And that's probably why you're hearing questions about sort of other things is, but I want to encourage our delegation members, if you have questions about the topics that they have raised specifically today, now is the time to ask them. I also wanted to compliment the, the school system on your job in filling the teacher vacancies that every school system across the country is struggling with. I know we still have some challenges, but from all reports, Howard County is on top of their game in terms of filling those. So thank you for that. And finally, I wanted to point the delegation to the document that was sent to us called Fast Facts. That is a really great document for the school system, which shows, which tells you a lot of things. And one of the things that caught my eye is that I would not have thought that eighty percent, just about eighty percent of our school teachers have a master's degree. And that's a really good sign that we are attracting a quality workforce. In addition to that, four or five percent are nationally board certified. So I wanted to compliment the school system on that and on that document, which is really helpful to us as legislators as we go around the county talking about school systems, about the school system. We do have a hard stop in about ten, fourteen minutes. So delegates, if you have questions specifically about the topics of the day, ask those first. And then we'll move on and keep going until five thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Delegate Tarassa. You're muted.
I can't believe I did that. Okay. So we've talked a little bit about, quite a bit about the capital budget, working together and prioritization. And I just wanted to say, I'm disappointed to see that Oakland Mills was pushed out significantly. I've heard from numerous constituents who feel, you know, they feel really like Oakland Mills is being overlooked in that. How can these long overdue needs be addressed? And what can be done in the interim? And can you tell me a little bit more about that issue?
Is that something that we could answer, oh, Dr., because it's not necessarily a legislative priority? Is that something that we could answer offline to set up a meeting with, with Mr. Washington and his staff to better answer that question?
Well, I'm just wondering if there's somebody who can say a little bit about that. We've been talking about the capital budget.
I'll gladly make it just a couple of comments, Ms. Watts, if that's okay. Mr. Washington, I see you're on as well. Once again, delegation and elected officials, let me just say a few things. I, at the last board meeting, I introduced the, the capital improvement project budget for the school system for this upcoming fiscal year as well as the ten-year plan. We were very clear that that was developed with the understanding of the data coming from a variety of different sources as well as the funding available. And there are several different data points at which we look to generate that document. From there, that is now in the hands of the Board of Education and will go through a process of review. We will have more conversations in public during our work sessions about that. But I would not like to opine on a particular project right now that has not been fully vetted by the board. And there's a process for that in the next month. So I'm sure that that will get some additional attention. Mr. Washington?
Good afternoon and thank you, Dr. Materano. I think the only pieces I wanted to add to that, supporting what Dr. M said, is the fact that when we put the budget together, and it is a recommendation, is the fact that we looked at basically four sets of data. And Mr. Luban, I know you're here as well. Number one, we started with our FY twenty-three capital budget as our baseline. At the same time, we also take a look at our capacity and regional program needs. You took a look at that. Our deferred maintenance list as well, as well as the state's FCI data. And from those three, we look for commonalities between all of those different data sets. And based off of those data sets, based off of the available funding that we have available and trying to maximize and capitalize on the various parts of money, not just our usual typical IAC funding, but also our build-to-learn funding, also as also as well as the SB two ninety-one funding as well. We're dealing with that whole local match situation, things like that. We came up with the suggestions on the recommendation that we gave to the board to maximize that. In case in your situation, Mr. Ross, what you're talking about, again, it goes back to the data set. And if, again, that is something we could talk offline about, because we do have the data set that shows how that budget was developed and possibly answer some of your questions.
I appreciate that. And I, I do understand that the board moved Oakland Mills up last year, so I'm just curious. And we can talk offline about that, but just concerned that it got pushed back behind other projects. And so, but I'd appreciate any information you could provide us on that.
Thank you, Delegate Tarassa. It's, it's really important issue that we, you know, believe in discussing, but just make sure we stay on the legislative priorities for today. Delegate Phil Mark.
Thank you. Thank you all. I will try to keep it brief. I do have a few questions. And, and one is sort of, I think, tied to the question that Delegate Tarassa just raised and sort of the, the issue of wanting to focus on legislative priorities here. But obviously, the capital budget is a big piece of that. And this is the main conversation we have each year as, as two bodies. And so I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, an additional conversation to talk about other issues beyond legislative, beyond the legislative platform makes sense. And I guess in the meantime, given the timing of the board's process with the capital budget, what is your preferred way to hear from us as we're hearing from constituents about these issues? Is it simply a matter of informally reaching out to individual board members? Is there a, a process you'd like us to follow? How can we sort of have that conversation?
Chair Cotronio, do you want to speak to that?
We have a work session coming up that will be really informative. But outside of that, if you, if the delegation's interested in a session dedicated specifically to the capital budget, knowing that we haven't voted on it yet, so we can't really deliberate fully on it, we would be open to that. I mean, anytime that we can have a conversation about the capital budget, I'm all for it, because it's, it's a challenge. I mean, when Ms. Thomas Mall was talking about the pre-K initiatives, well, that's why a lot of things got pushed back again, because now we have pre-K. And so we, it's like, we can't print money. We rely on the county and the state for funding, and there's only so much. And we're given an amount, and so we have to continually make Sophie's Choice, really. Because we, they, they need to be done now. But the funding is not there, and, and other projects come up that have more pressing needs, like the pre-K initiative and such. So we are open to a, a muting if the delegation wishes to talk about the capital budget and, and that sort of thing.
Okay, okay. Thank you. The other questions I wanted to focus on, I think, deal with the teacher recruitment and retention, a couple of points. I really appreciated Dr. Materano's points about the focus on wellness and wellbeing of educators, and I know that that has been a high concern through the pandemic and, and continues to be, as we're not yet entirely through the pandemic. So I wanted to ask about sort of what you're seeing in terms of COVID exposures that educators are facing and in terms of recruitment and retention and, and sort of acknowledging all the additional stresses. I know one of the concerns I've heard is that for educators who are exposed at work in the schools, in the classroom, and contract COVID, they're no longer able to take administrative leave for that absence and are actually drawing on their, their own personal leave for that. Is that accurate? And has there been any consideration to addressing that?
So if, if I may, I'll take the first bite of the apple on that. What you're referring to is COVID leave that was available for our staff members in the previous years while COVID was in place at that level. And there is one that's sort of framed this. The county government is still offering that leave. No other school system in the state of Maryland is offering that leave. I'm just giving you some, some information. We have been in discussion with our bargaining units on this particular topic. The Board of Education met recently, and I've given them my assurance that I would continue my conversations with our negotiated conversations with our bargaining units about that. So that conversation is still in place, but also recognize that our, our teachers each have ten sick days, as well as three personal days. And then this is additional leave that was on top of that. And although we've had those conversations, I've given my word to the board that we'll go back and have those further discussions with the bargaining units.
Okay, thank you. And, and my other question related to recruitment and retention is where do ESPs fit into those, those efforts and, and concerns? I know we had some legislation last year to, to increase pay and, and study that. But I, I know that it's a really critical role in the school and one that you're also, I understand, having trouble filling. Are there recruitment and retention efforts that we can help you with specifically towards ESPs?
I, I've got a lot I want to say, but we've got a couple of minutes left, so I don't know how much we wanted to say.
Mr. Lerner popped in, if he wanted to add anything quickly.
Do you want to go first, Dr. Materano, or you want me to say?
Just go ahead, because we're, our time is limited with hard stops. There is a lot on this topic that we're doing, but go ahead, Mr. Lerner.
Right. So yes, ESP employees are extremely important to the school system. There's no question about it, Delegate Phil Mark. I mean, certainly, we, we do not have the same level of difficulty recruiting for ESP personnel as we do for certificated personnel. I mean, we, we do have the applicants for ESP personnel. Now, that doesn't make them not important. It does not make them that somebody we can switch in and out. Obviously, somebody with experience and knowledge is incredibly valuable. So obviously, I mean, one piece is, I mean, all boats rise. When we have more money for salaries, obviously, the blueprint focuses on teacher salaries, but certainly as we are able to give cost of living adjustments and, and steps to all of our employee groups, the, the ability to raise salaries for ESP employees matters as well. One, one thing that we do, and it kind of ties with ESP back to the, the teaching pipeline, we have been really focused recently and very successful in identifying programs for and talented ESP personnel to become teachers. So we've started some new programs. One of the big barriers has always been student teaching, because historically, you had to stop your job to be able to, to, for a semester, student teach full-time. And we've recently worked with some partners with some universities where that no longer has to happen. So we, we have paraeducators who can continue to do their jobs, but also be student teachers. And we have, we have a few dozen teachers already over the past couple of years and more coming, who are now in our system, who were our paraeducators, who've been able to continue in that role and have now transferred in, have now moved into a, to a teaching role, which we're real excited about.
Thank you. Ms. Mosley, do you have something to add very quickly, and then we'll wrap it up?
Super quickly, I too would like us to meet to talk about the capital budget, because I have some concerns on the process and methodologies that are used within that whole structure. And I think it's very important that we discuss and make changes as appropriate. Please invite me to that meeting when it comes together.
So speaking of meetings, I think if there's any more questions about the legislative priorities, then you can reach out to myself. If you have questions about scheduling these kind of interesting topics, maybe we'll call them that. Maybe you can reach out to Chair Cotronio, and she can set up meetings. There are, we can have meetings with a, a board members one-off, but if you have my more encompassing questions, that would be, go through Chair Cotronio, and she can put you in touch with the correct staff members or board members, should you choose. Does that sound good, Chair Cotronio? And that, and that's all for the legislative platform.
Yeah. So just to, just to verify, you would like individual legislators to reach out to you if they have specific legislative questions, and you will help figure out who they need to talk to and what information is needed, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. And then in, in terms of future meetings, I would ask the delegates to contact me and let me know what it is they're looking for. And I'd like to hear from everyone if they want to see a meeting set up, or whether they would prefer a meeting be held just with a smaller group. If not, if the whole group is not asking for this. And I think the senators could reach out to, to Senator Lamb with the same information.
That sounds good.
Delegate Watson can, I can be in touch with Delegate Watson. As chair of the delegation and chair of the board, we can certainly coordinate on meetings and such. So that would probably be the appropriate route to, to do that.
Dr. Materano, do you have anything to conclude this meeting?
I, I was just going to say thank you, Ms. Watts. Delegate Watson and members also remember, I think it was January of twenty eighteen, we gathered in the George Howard Building on a Saturday morning, and we had a very robust conversation about relocatables, deferred maintenance, and it was just for information and great conversation. I believe that went on for three hours. That was a very productive meeting, and I would encourage us to gather again, as all the bodies together, to have that discussion. That's what I would be suggesting for that. So this has been a very productive meeting, and we'll continue to give you information as it pertains to the legislation. Thank you.
Dr. Dr. Materano, just to clarify what you just said, is the board's vote on the budget in September?
Mr. Washington, on the capital budget, go ahead. Mr. Washington, on the timeline?
Yes, the board will actually vote on the capital budget on the twenty-second of this month.
Okay.
That starts the process from there in, because it has to be turned into the county, I see, by October the fourth is the process.
Right. So what I would encourage our delegates to do that have specific questions on specific projects is to reach out to Antonia, Board Member Watts, now, because you've only got basically ten days before the board actually votes on this budget. That doesn't mean changes can't be made later, but your individual input should go to them right now. And Dr. Materano, I think that's a great idea. I just don't know with the timing of it. Maybe in January.
I know we did it in January before.
Yeah, I remember that.
Hey, everyone. This has been a great meeting. Thank you all for your time and thank you for attending. And again, we all know our follow-up avenues for, for the future. So have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Nice evening.
Thank you. Good night.